Try that again. Can you hear us, John? John, can you hear us?
We can't hear you.
Okay, I'm under meeting me. Okay, now can you hear me?
I can hear you now. All right, we're gonna start that again. It is 7:01 and I will call this meeting of the Town of Commissioners to order. Clerk Hotson, can you please do roll call for us?
Will do. President Franklin?
Here.
Commissioner Colbert?
Here.
Commissioner Duckett?
Here.
Commissioner Hansett?
Here.
Commissioner Lot?
Here.
Town Administrator Carl Snyder?
Here.
Police Chief David Burst?
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond? Now, hold on, another promoted panelist, hold on.
The panelists.
Darnell, are you here?
Here.
Don Hotson, Town Clerk, here.
All right, thank you. We will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we'll have, now have a review of the agenda. Do you wanna read it out, John? We all have it in front of us and we're together, so I don't know.
That's fine. Yep. One, call order. Two, roll call. Three, Pledge of Allegiance. Four, review of agenda. Five, closed session summary, which... Hold on. Yeah. Consent agenda, meeting minutes, public safety report, public works report, financial report, and the administrative report. We have then reports from the committees. Old business. We have A, Resolution 2043-03, license plate readers, board approval. B, conference room agreement, board approval. C, fiscal year '24 board priorities, board approval. D, historic committee board nominations, board approval. E, human resources RFP, board approval. Nine, new business, public comment will be taken prior to the business. A, Resolution 2023-04 Economic Development Work Group, intro. B, Ordinance 2023-01 Budget Amendment, intro. C, Ordinance 2023-02 Elections, intro. Ten, administrative update. Eleven, public comment. Twelve, preliminary approval of next meeting agenda, and thirteen, adjournment. You can strike the closed session summary, because we don't have one.
That's what I was gonna say. I don't think we have. So, if we can strike item five, closed session summary.
That can be removed.
I would've read it the last. Does anyone else have any changes, additions? All right. So, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Yep, President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert? Commissioner Colbert? Commissioner Duckett? No.
Here.
Okay.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You get five ayes, John?
I did, that time.
All right, we'll move on to reports. We can start with Arts Council Committee Report. Commissioner Duckett, have they met yet?
They met, actually, last month at Coz, what is it, the spa. So, it was a nice meeting. I wasn't able to attend, but I did get an update. So, we have an agenda, and I've sent that to, I don't know, but to John Hotson. So, he has an agenda for the rest of the year, and also our dates for upcoming events.
Okay. So, we should put those on the March, to be approved in March?
The next meeting is on March, uh, let me just see. On March 13th, at 6:00 a.m. And it should be on the website, is that correct, John?
Yeah, those will be going on the website, they're forthcoming, yep.
Okay.
I just mean the event dates have to be approved, because they're new into the calendar. So, we'll put that on the March agenda.
And that's it.
Thank you. Sir?
Basically, they just had their monthly meeting last month, and that's pretty much it.
So, they had their monthly meeting last month?
Yeah.
I don't know if people can hear you, that's why I repeated. All right, we'll go on to Events Committee, Commissioner Lot.
So, we have an upcoming meeting, March 2nd. We're gonna do a blended meeting, online and in person, and we're gonna serve some refreshments. We're trying to stir up some newcomers to come and participate on the events team. We want people to get involved, and we are possibly rolling out a once-a-month event for children in the community. So, we are gonna be talking about that as well, doing something once a month for the children of the community of Upper Marlboro.
That's it.
We'll go to the Green Team. Green Team, Commissioner Hansett?
Green Team is moving along. Our seedlings are coming along also. I did wanna mention that some of our seeds have come in, so I'm going to get with everyone on the Green Team, and we're gonna start organizing time to start planting some of those. Other than that, that's about it for now. Thank you.
Administrator Snyder, you wanna do a Greenwell overview, or you want me to kinda... So, we spoke with Greenwell Consulting earlier today. They are following our money to make sure it stays in the budget. They are tracking new funds that are being released that we may be able to use for parks and trail funding, and they are just tracking the legislation as it goes. Missed anything? All right, Historical Committee will hopefully have a report next month. And then Sustainable Community, Commissioner Colbert?
We've met a number of times on the legislation that's on, that's later on in the agenda. Sustainable Community.
All right, we'll move on to Commissioner Report. So, had another busy month. I attended the State Attorney Municipal Retreat and learned some interesting things about sentencing and release and all that kinda thing. And we are working with State Attorney's Office. They're putting forward a request for funding for youth intervention programs and bringing in the municipalities to help make those happen. And we go to the Second Annual Volunteer Appreciation Event, which was a fantastic event. We were all there. The volunteers felt appreciated. We had our Black History Month proclamation at the beginning of the month, and we've had posts going up throughout the month, and that was... I was invited to be part of a program for the University of Maryland School of Public Policy called EXEL, which is a leadership training program, and it's really good exposure for the town, and it will give me more skills to bring home. So, I tended to kick off for that. I also attended with Commissioner Hansett, a touch of class awards. A lot of French Georgia County folks were given awards for the work they did to help bring Washington International Horse Show here to Upper Marlboro, and it was a really nice event. I attended the Maryland Mayors Conference, learned a lot of new things, why we have some of this stuff going on, just to help the town maintain and stay with the times. I also met with our legislators at the state level, and I testified on a bill that is to create some equity in cleaning up along state highways, because the funding is inequitable right now. And then, we had conversations with residents. We started door knocking, maybe continuing door knocking to just check in. Budget season, great time to tell us what you want us to keep doing and what you want to see changed. So, that's why we're trying to have these conversations with you over the next few weekends, and continue to hold conversations and negotiations with regard to the annexation towards 301. What I've got on my report, Commissioner Colbert?
Couple of items. As I mentioned, we've had a couple of discussions on Sustainable Communities Work Groups. Team to try to make sure, shore up that legislation and get it in place. Also attended, participated in the door knocking with several other commissioners, touching base with the residents, making sure folks know about events coming up, activities in the town that may be affecting them, so hoping to continue to push and do more neighborhoods as the weeks come on. I attended or sat in on a follow-up call to the Mayor's Retreat on State Attorney's Office. Lot of good information out of there, so hopefully there'll be some more follow-up coming out of that. Also attended as a guest of, at the Maryland Mayor's Association, a reception at the Governor's Mansion. So, we've got Governor Moore, First Lady Moore, as well as a number of other municipal officials across the state.
Have a light agenda today, so attended the Volunteers' Event, which I see some of the faces here tonight. So, thank you so much for the participation, and that will be the end of my report.
Good evening, everyone. This month, I met with Chief Burst about the department needs and discussed, you know, what he wants in the budget. I met with Mayor Franklin on a meeting on the 17th of February with Better City. Levon Ralph, for annexation on the 17th. Also, we went to the horse industry, I'm sorry, the Maryland Horse Industry Reception in Annapolis with Senator Harrison and others. That was a nice thing. It was a nice to get, you know, socialize and meet people in the state and bring the International Washington Horse Show to Upper Marlboro. We also did some door knocking for annexation last week. And that's about it for me. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm gonna be brief. Basically, I'm working on, first of all, I attended the Volunteers' Event as well as the Appreciation, and I did some door knocking in regards to the annexation and the upcoming events in the town. And my focus right now was to try to expand the Events Committee and try to get people motivated to come out and help, so that we don't have the same people participating, but maybe hopefully have a list and have people sign up for exactly what event they wanna participate in, so that, you know, everyone is not spread so thin. So, that's what I'm working on. And I hope to see you guys at the next events meeting on, I think it's March 2nd.
This is Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday coming up. Yeah, so we're gonna have some light refreshments and bring your ideas. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our old business category. Public comment will be taken for each of these items. If you are virtual and you want to provide public comment, please raise your hand as we are discussing the topic. If you are here in person and you want to provide public comment, please line up at the podium if you want to provide public. We'll start with Resolution 2023-03 License Plate Readers. Did I turn that over to you, Kyle, or Chief?
I can do it if, if it's for you.
Read it into the record?
Yep.
Duncan, can you read it into the record?
Yep. Resolution 2023-03 Session Regular Town Meeting, dated February 28, 2023. A resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro to approve the second acceptance of a fiscal year '23 local agency license from the Maryland State Police and authorize the purchase of cameras and license plate readers.
That was from me. I shut it off. Sorry.
Okay, hold on.
I was trying to hear better.
Okay.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you guys earlier, so I apologize. Thank you.
John, sorry.
That's okay.
Can you start again for us?
I sure will. Resolution 2023-03 Session Regular Town Meeting, dated February 28, 2023. A resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro to approve the second acceptance of a fiscal year '23 local agency license plate reader grant from the Maryland State Police and authorize the purchase of cameras and a license from a vendor.
Board discussed this a few times, and so this is just the second round of grants for license plate readers to be installed on the police cars. It's fully funded by the Maryland State Police Grant Program, so this will fund one additional cars, per total of three cars, having license plate readers for quick driver information feedback in a stolen vehicle or something like that. Also, we'll see it right there, and so this is, the board's authorizing the approval of the second round of license plate readers. You can spend the money and then get fully reimbursed.
Are there any Commissioner comments, questions, on this topic? Okay, no public lined up here. Is there anyone online wishing to comment, John?
I do not see anyone with a hand raised.
You have no one with your hand raised?
No, no one with a hand raised here. We're good.
Okay, we have a resident here. You can just say your name and...
I don't take a bunch of time, I just wanna... I've heard a lot. I haven't been to a meeting since the coat. I've talked to people, placed the things, get a more better view of what's going on. I've heard a lot of what you all said through the phone. I mean, good things happened, but a lot of heel good stuff today.
So, I'm sorry, sir, do you have a comment on the license plate readers? Because we wanna hear your comments.
I don't have a license plate reader.
Okay, so we'll do general public comment at the end. So, we're commenting on the items, we're gonna vote, and then at the end, we'll have general.
It's what I'm waiting for.
Sorry, so as we go through the business, in each item that we discuss, if you wanna come up and provide a comment on that, and then at the end, we will have general. Huh?
You just tell me what.
Okay, you have general public on, you have, okay.
Hello, Evelyn Stevens from Paul Neil Rose, Marlboro. There are a lot of this information through media about license plate readers. But as far as the ordinance is concerned, I have one question, and that's the second way. Have a glass, I'm a filter. Okay, keep going, go through. The second way, the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Marlboro has authority pursuant to, I'm gonna cite this, of the town charter to pass ordinances to establish, operate, and maintain a police force, and that all town policemen, sheriffs, and the municipalities have the powers and authorities of constables in this state. Is that something that this ordinance need, do we need to say that in this ordinance? So, how does it apply? Because, yes, police should be able to establish, but isn't it somewhere else in the ordinances?
So, our, so our lawyer prepares and advises on these and just puts his preparation and advice, so...
Oh, so he approves this, so let him know that a resident asked about that statement, because I don't see where, I mean, it seems like it gives power, but I feel that that power should be somewhere else as opposed to this ordinance, because this ordinance should relate to readers. I don't see where it should relate to anything else. This second way has related to other powers of the police, regardless of the reason. So, that's my question. I think that other reasons are good, but I don't see where this, where this second way should be in this ordinance.
That's all I have, all right? All right, John, you don't have any hands?
No, not at this time.
All right, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2023-03?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Call the roll, John?
Yep, President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you.
We'll move on to the conference room agreement, which is on page 15. Again, I'll just, we've talked about this a couple of times, just to modernize and simplify the agreement for renting this conference room. Are there any, do you need to read any of this into the record, John?
No.
Are there any Commissioner comments?
No.
Commissioner's comments, questions, concerns? Is there any public comment online, John?
Not at this time.
There's no comment in the room, so I will, oh, sorry. Page 16, 16 hundred room. And the deposit is returned, as long as the conference room stays in original status. Is there a motion to approve the conference room agreement?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, President Franklin. Yep, President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We'll move on to the FY24 Board Priorities. Those are on page 19. We discussed these last time. I did make modifications based on our discussion after the work session. Is there any Commissioner comments, questions, changes? John, are there any hands raised online?
Not at this time. Not at this time.
No one's come up to the podium here, so I will ask if there's a motion to approve FY24 Board of Righteous.
Go move.
Second.
President Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Move on to Historic Committee Board Nominations. This is a board approval. The three names we presented to you all at the work session for our Historic Committee Board, they are Latonya Sessions, Heather Brown, and Leon Miller. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, it's on page 20.
Yep, no hands raised now, at this time.
No one is at the podium, so I will ask if there is a motion to approve the Historic Committee Board nomination.
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
President Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
And we'll move on to the Human Resources RFP. We talked about this, and we just are gonna approve it, and then we'll get posted online, and proposals will come in. Are there any changes anyone wants to be made, questions, comments? If you're online, raise your hand. If you're in the room, go up to podium and tap on. All right, John, are there any hands raised online?
Not at this time.
Is there a motion to approve the Human Resources RFP?
Yep, go move.
Second?
Second.
President Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our old business out of the way. We'll move on to new business, starting with Resolution 2023-04 Economic Development Work Group. This is an introduction of this resolution. Does it need to be read in? So, John, if you can read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 2023-04 Session Regular Town Meeting, introduced this evening, February 28, 2023. It'll be approved on the March 28, 2023 meeting. Resolution by the Board of Town Commissioners to establish, approve, and maintain an Upper Marlboro Economic Development Work Group, UMEDW.
Okay, and this is on page 23, and Administrator Snyder, can you give us an overview?
Absolutely. This has been in the works for a month or two now, Commissioner Colbert and Commissioner Duckett, as well as the members of the Sustainable Communities. I've met a couple of times. We have a meeting next week to discuss the changes. Then before the Town Attorney, and he is reviewing the Commissioner portion of it. He's doing a deeper dive into that, so that we may see some changes to that for the March work session. But overall, it kinda shifts the Sustainable Community workers and their efforts into a broader umbrella committee that'll do that, into the sudden improvement program, as well as looking into possibly having the town create a nonprofit economic development corporation that's able to give the town its nonprofit way and apply for different grants that the town may not be able to get to for economic development purposes. Summarizing a lot of broad goals in this quick.
Commissioner Colbert or Duckett, do you wanna add anything?
Um, sorry.
Well, no, no, I just, I feel like it's a good direction to move in in terms of being able to offer the additional opportunities in terms of grants. So, I appreciate this, and I think that the input from the ladies that have been participating in this all this time has helped to aid in this discussion as well, so it's very much appreciated.
I would echo those sentiments. We basically formed an ad hoc committee in reviewing and revising this legislation. So, I think we've gotten into a place that meets a lot of common goals, and even settling on the names. The Economic Development Work Group provides that bridge between, you know, where Sustainable Communities was and to where the future vision of it in Florida town. If you're in a good place, pending any further feedback from the Town Attorney.
Do Commissioners have any comments? If you're online, now's a good time to raise your hand. If you're here in person, now's a good time to go to the podium, and if you have comments on the Economic Development Work Group. Commissioner Hansett, Commissioner Lot? Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Lot. Yes?
At this time, thank you.
John, are there any hands up online?
I have no comments online.
All right, we'll move on to ordinance 2023-01 Budget Amendment. I'm going to ask you to read that into the record, please, John. That's on page twenty-three.
Ordinance 2023-01 Session Regular Town Meeting Introduced This Evening, February 28, 2023. An ordinance relating to adopting and approving budget amendments for the fiscal year 2023 budget. Whereas the town of Upper, okay, that's all three.
Right.
Okay, so this is the EBITD budget adjustment. The town has been learning because we are moving some money, especially around the speed camera program is one of the main reasons we had to do this. We budgeted a limited amount of money in the speed camera program in the FY23 budget because we're unsure the performance of the program. The program is doing fairly well and so we have more funds than we had budgeted. So now we're moving some categories out of some police expenses and adding some new expenses that will fall under the automated speed camera program as well as shifting, coming out of salaries, especially in general government to cover some other expenses as we were down bookkeeper and grant writer and whatnot. So shifting those funds into covering the overages we saw in the. Yeah. And some other whole split in this lane, if I have them there as well. These numbers are draft. We just deep-dug at the last work session. I encourage anyone to kind of look at that and see where we're going with those. If you have any specific questions, I expect to have them updated and a lot easier to read figures for the board at the March work session as I work with the accounting firm. That's the source of.
Commissioner, does anyone have any comments, questions?
Not at this time.
Residents, if you have comments on this, if you want to come to the podium, I'll raise your hand online. John, do we have any online answers?
I do not at this time.
Okay, we have a resident here at the podium.
Yes, from outside, first street, I got to do it. Just wanted to mention they budgeted something like a new key camera that they ramp up in one year and go down the other. I remember looking through it a couple of years ago, saw that across the board, each and every. One minute.
We will move on now as long as there's no hands up online, John.
There are no more online, none online.
Move on to ordinance 2023-02 Elections, and that's its official introduction. So John, if you can read it into the record for us.
Will do. Ordinance 2023-02 Session Regular Town Meeting Introduced February 28, 2023. An ordinance to regulate and provide for the conduct of voter registration, maintenance of records, conduct of elections, certification of election results, and penalties related there are too, and generally relating to town elections.
Should I have Clarifox in? Do you want to kind of also give us the overview of that because you've been working with the Board of Supervisors and the town attorney on this?
Yeah, this is basically just to modify some things prior to the election coming up in November. The Board of Elections, the supervisors have met, they have reviewed it. There are a few changes that I know town attorney has provided that I need to review with the Board of Elections before the final vote, and that will be done in the coming weeks. But therefore, it's just modifying a few things that needed to be done.
We'll have the feedback from the Board of Supervisors of Elections before our work session on March fourteenth.
That's correct.
Commissioners, any questions? We've been looking at this for a while, so. Are there any hands raised online, John?
Not, that I see, no.
Anyone here wish to speak? All right. We will move on to administrative updates. I believe our administrators have an update for us.
Absolutely. So we discussed this with the board a little bit, and we're looking to change our healthcare broker. It's not going to call off the town any funds. It's going to be the same amount because the town uses CareFirst, Blue Cross Blue Shield as a healthcare provider. It's just a matter of which broker we use and then they get commissions from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So we had a firm that we first switched to Blue Cross Blue Shield five or six years ago, Lycium, and then when we brought on the new HR part, they wanted to use their broker, which was Benefit Mall. We've had some issues with Benefit Mall, some pretty severe ones and even more troubling ones since we've begun the conversation. So this letter is to the new broker authorizing them to take back over from the previous broker. We had no issues with that initially. We had a couple meetings with them then, discussed switching back over because we're not switching Blue Cross. We're still assisting with Blue Cross, it's just a matter of who's kind of managing the account, so it's not a big headache. But after discussions with the mayor and just to make it, I want to make it apparent even though there's no funds being spent, we want to bring an administrative update versus an actual voting.
Commissioners have any comments, questions, concerns? There we can talk about. All right, that's all we need.
There's no votes up.
Now we're going to move into general public comment so that you can comment on anything that you wish to. And you may go first. And if you're online, just raise your hand and we'll get you.
And I think that's what the majority of the people in town are interested in, their property values. Property values are go up or down, per code. We've got a code. Here's the town code book. It's written 2016, been here for thirty years. The old town book has a lot of things that aren't in this one, and that's why I'm saying. When I was there, the code violation, don't we have a police report every month of things that happen in the town? Why don't we have a code? I've called many times, but it's not my job. Monitor the town, find out what codes are being broken, so it's new. But if I don't deal with it, it's almost like if I see something, you're not going to do anything about it, but you got a code first and they ride around the town. They're not going to think about it until I like the code or you call. They shouldn't be seeing these things. And a lot of things that have been taken care of, I'm not complaining about that. I have brought up, but I don't want to be the person that brings it up. And you don't want to be the person that's taking so, you know, battle with your neighbor. It's not your job. I like to see a report, maybe a monthly, but at least do their report. Code violations. If I don't see any code violations in the report, but I see code violations in town and somebody's not doing their job. Because I mean, you, you have any comments on that? Maybe I won't.
We're not supposed to comment. Take notes, then let me do that.
One other thing is have hands for the garbage, not even, not garbage, but trash. Not at all that. Many times, if somebody in this, in this place thanks for this, I have called the bad puzzles in the yard because trash is being put out in plastic bags. Since that happened, you know what happens. So maybe we might be a, not a bad idea on a Monday morning if the color person or the cops or something say the line through before the trash people get there. See that? Nobody seems to see anything. So I mean, that's, that's all it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I haven't taken notes.
President Franklin, I do have someone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, one minute.
You guys can still get up if you want to go to the podium.
President Franklin, can you hear me, members of the commission?
I can, yes. Can you state your name because I don't have the.
Patty Callicott.
Okay, sorry. The voices are a little strange through the thing. Go ahead.
In, in October 25th, the town hall meeting, President Franklin submitted an approval, submitted for approval, an emergency ordinance 2022-07. There was no communication with the historical committee regarding this emergency ordinance, which upon approval rendered the historical committee defunct and unable to resign without approval. These actions by the president prompted the six longstanding volunteers to submit the resignations at will prior to the approval of that emergency ordinance. How did we get there? President Franklin contends it was the historical committee's fault. The TUMHC emails show differently, and I encourage every commissioner to seek the truth. I have requested privately that the president cease publicly attacking the integrity, reputation, and character of the former historical committee and me as a chairperson of eight years. I am now publicly requesting it based on the following false, misconstrued public statements made by the president, that the committee did not comply to downsizing the number of members on the TUMHC board since February. That statement insinuates insubordination and neglect. Upon public challenge, it was realized by the president as a false statement, that the committee intentionally caused issues and concerns with the TUMHC board members being appointed. This insinuates intentional malfeasance and impropriety by a longstanding board that has no lawful duty, obligation, or power to appoint or remove its board members. In last week's work session, the president stated the town had several closed session discussions regarding a committee member. If true, the president willfully declined to perform the duties under Charter Section 8215 to remove that committee member, while admitting there was no time to negotiate a list that consisted of five board members and two new potential appointees. The committee caused, she insinuated the committee caused the town of Upper Marlboro to issue an emergency ordinance. The president's options to appoint members were solicit and appoint preferable members in a timely manner, appoint a modified list, substituting current board members or interested citizens, or appoint members leaving a vacant position. The president willfully declined to perform the duties to appoint members to the historical committee by November 1, 2022, in accordance with ordinance 2012-02, and instead generated an emergency ordinance. After months of email requests, I am now publicly requesting that the president ceased her continued attempt to escape accountability by misconstruing the facts, implying culpability, neglect, malfeasance, and a lack of communication of the historical committee. Those longstanding board members supported the committee, the committee mission for ten years, volunteering their time, energy, and the times, their personal property, to support this town. By admission, it knows.
Please.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Ryan Call, that's third of three. We just, well, that, number one, the website, the embedded link is broken, all browsers anomalous, okay, where, where, go, go with it. Number two, this is near, dear to my heart, a worker from the Herbert Building, and I do have no camera. Don't paint down the drain at the end of the property, that drain goes to the testing bay. I did open a ticket, hence it worked. We opened a non-emergency ticket, we felt there was a riot. Of course, they discussed with Patty, then they discussed presumably with the other people separately, which is the way it works. I'm going to be requesting a police report, obviously, not in this town unless you do have it. And also, I opened a DOE case, Department of Firemen, about that, and I still have the ticket open until March seventeenth. So I just want to know, non-emergency work this time, which is sort of rare, they usually push back. And the other thing is I'm still dealing with a pretty serious issue with the commercial industry in town hiring contractors, every really bad thing.
I want to see again two comments. I would like to know the status of the Old Mill Road project in relation to the temporary payment of Old Mill Road. I've talked about this, oh, I guess about four weeks ago, that it would be a temporary road because of issues with the contract. So I'd like to get some of that. And then I would also like to request that the agenda format be changed. And what I mean by that is that during work sessions, I believe, and tell me if I'm wrong, that the public cannot speak unless we're invited to that. We can do that here right now in town hall. However, in discussions, the real meat of things occurred during the work session where I believe that the residents should be allowed to voice their feelings about what's going on in town. So I request that at some point we have that on the agenda, that, that format change so that instead of us having our three minutes of fame at town hall, we can have our three minutes of fame.
John, did anyone else raise hands online?
I have nobody else raised their hands.
Allison here. Okay, folks, I've taken notes on everyone's comment and we will address these. We just don't have answers right away and we're advised not. I think we will move on to the preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. This is up on the screen behind you, Commissioner. I think there's two things I want to have, but do you want to read it for us, Clarifox?
I can do that. One, call to order. Two, roll call. Three, pledge of allegiance. Four, review of agenda. Five, old business will be A, Resolution 2023-04 Economic Development Work Group for discussion. Ordinance 2023-01 Budget Amendment for discussion. Ordinance 2023-02 Elections for discussion. Resolution 2022-05 Regulation for Town Meetings for discussion. Charter review for discussion. Government Relations Forum RFP for discussion. New business, A, Departmental and CIP Budget Discussion, Board Discussion. Preliminary approval of next meeting agenda and eight adjournments.
Thank you. I'd like to add Arts Committee Council Event Day approval. Let us know what the dates are, how you got them rolling. I think Kyle, you have something that came up.
That's correct, Mayor. A discussion with Park and Planning on the any age of municipalities, community grants, this preparation, and I think we're pretty good for starting to pass a resolution approving that application for the trail study for the Chesapeake. I think from Park and Planning, the resolution is before. That shows that I'm not a rogue state. So we have that prepared at the March session for possible approval at the March town meeting.
Those are the two additions. Do commissioners have any additions, changes, et cetera? And John, you heard Kyle?
Yes, I did.
All right, we'll move forward with that agenda because there's no comments, questions, or concerns. Is there a motion to adjourn? Go move. Okay, second. Want to call that, John?
President Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.
Good to see you there.